Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We do have a quorum. And at this time, we would like to ask if Mr. Majors, if you would, please lead us in the pledge.
(inaudible)
Thank you, Mr. Majors. We may have to call on you later. Thank you so much. Is that from hard work today? Yeah. At this time, we would like to recognize any visitors we have in the audience, any public officials. We're all family. Thank you, but welcome to all of you. Okay, Ms. Poole? Is she not here? Okay. If she comes in later, we will ask her if she would give us her report a little bit later. Okay, Dr. De Priest.
Dr. Rebecca Burnet served Metro Nashville Public Schools for 25 years. She served students with visual impairments and blindness as an elementary vision resource teacher, itinerant teacher, and lead teacher. Prior to teaching students with visual impairments and blindness, Rebecca taught students with multiple disabilities. She was also well-known in the field of vision as a co-author of textbooks, curricula, and assessment instruments. Besides all these accomplishments, Rebecca was an adjunct professor and supervisor of student teachers at Middle Tennessee State University, Vanderbilt University, and the University of Arkansas. She was the recipient of awards on the local, state, and national levels in recognition of her valuable contribution to the field of visual impairment and blindness. Rebecca dedicated her life to the service of others. She was a wonderful teacher and friend who always had time to listen. She continued to show care and concern for her students long after they graduated by visiting them, calling them, and showering them with gifts. She was the beloved wife to Mark Francisco and a devoted mother to Joe, a senior at Martin Luther King Junior Magnet School. She died on February 16th after fighting a courageous battle with cancer. Please pause to remember Rebecca Burnet.
Thank you. Meredith Libby. Awards and recognition at this time.
Madam Chairwoman, I'm not aware of any awards or recognition. I beg your pardon.
That's okay. We always like to know.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe there's someone in the audience that we missed, but if not tonight, we'll do it again. Thank you. Okay, public.
Check Will. We got it.
I beg your pardon.
That's all right.
I'm accustomed to minor awards and recognitions, and big, major, exciting things usually go to somebody at a higher level. So, tonight, I am truly honored that we are able to recognize our friends from CMT and McGavick High School. Can you?
No.
No. I guess that did go to a higher level.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'll recognize the -- this is a donation to MNPS School Planning and Construction by Chadwell Elementary. And Mr. Henson may want to say some additional words to that. Chris, anything else to say?
This is a construction award, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
I'm going to let Michelle Thomas, who's the project manager on the Chadwell Elementary renovation project, this was something that the contractor for this particular project donated to the school. And Michelle, as project manager, played a key part in this donation, so, Michelle, I'll let you.
Okay.
Want to read your comments?
I can do that. The design and construction team for a major renovation project that's ongoing right now at Chadwell Elementary has taken actions that contribute to sustainability, as well as provide a benefit to the school. Materials from demolition on the project that might have been taken to a landfill were not taken to a landfill, but instead were sold as salvage, and the proceeds given to the school. So, members of our team that were part of this included the architect, Gays Overton with Southeast Ventures, our general contractor, Eric Cantorik with TG Constructors, our mechanical contractor, Plaid Jarmwright with Harris Mechanical, our plumbing contractor, Vincent Plumbing, and myself, Michelle Thomas, project manager with Metro Schools. So, on behalf of all of us on the construction team, this representative check for $4,835 is presented to Mrs. Renita Perkins, who's principal of Chadwell Elementary School.
Thank you.
Thank you. She's number one. Arlie Bravo, and then Carla Chavez. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Perkins, and to the construction company and our construction department, we want to say thank you. It's always great to have money going into your accounts at schools. And moving round along for public participation, the board will hear from those individuals or persons who have requested to appear at this board meeting. In the interest of time, speakers are requested to limit three -- to limit their remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed, and we will begin with Ms. Arlie Bravo, gratitude to school board for supporting the Dream Act.
Hello, my name is Arlie Bravo. I am a senior at John Overton High School originally from Mexico. I am one of the core leaders at Jump, Jovenes Unidos Pero Mejor Presente, which means Youth United for a Better Present. We are the only youth-led youth group that focuses on undocumented students here in Tennessee. I've been in the U.S. for more than half my life, and Tennessee has been the only home I've known. I'd like to thank all of you for passing the Dream Act resolution in January. By doing that, not only have you given hope to me, but to all of the undocumented students here in the MNPS system. As graduation gets closer, I have a mix of emotions. I'm happy because I'll be graduating with students that -- my friends that I've been with since elementary school, but also because I'm uncertain of what my future will be after May 19th, the day I graduate. I eventually -- I wonder if I'll eventually make it to college, or will I have money to pay for school later on? As being undocumented, in-state tuition doesn't apply to me, so I'd have to pay three times the amount or more than that for going to college. I've been in the MNPS system for all 13 years, and I would love to attend college here in the U.S. It breaks my heart to know that each year, thousands of students go through this dilemma as I do, and I'd just like to thank all of y'all for taking it to consideration and thinking about us who have worked hard here and been trying to get better education, to have a better future for us and our families. We look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Chavez.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Carla Chavez. I am a youth member from Jump, as she stated, it's Youth United for a Better Present. And I want to start off by just thanking every single one of you that voted for the Dream Act resolution. I was in my living room, and it just brought me to tears to see that finally people were taking leadership on this issue. I came to United States when I was five years old. I've been living in Nashville since then. I'm now 21. I'm a freshman at a community college. High school was bittersweet for me because I saw all my dreams and aspirations shatter because I found out that I was undocumented. I was top of my class, and I graduated with an honors diploma at McGavick High School, but I was very uncertain of what my future would hold. For two years, I worked really hard to save up and to apply for private scholarships, but because of the out-of-state tuition that I have to pay, it's just really hard for me and my parents. So, after two years, I finally got some scholarships, and I was able to enroll in the university. It still continues to be -- I'm sorry, I'm nervous. It still continues to be really hard because I've been a freshman for three semesters because I can only take three courses at each time. So, the struggles continue for even students that get the opportunity to go to college. I'm very involved in the community. I love helping people. I love being a mentor. I love going back to McGavick and just mentoring those students that might feel that they won't have that higher education. And I just want for you guys to help us make the reality come true for those students. Even though the Dream Act resolution was voted on, while we're waiting for it, we want to invite you guys to work with us to make equal education for all MNPS students. And we want to make you honorary Jump members, and we're presenting T-shirts for you guys so you can all wear them and get comfy in your beds. And also, a lot of students wrote letters of gratitude, and we made them into little booklets, and we're going to pass them to you guys.
Thank you so very much. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies, so very much for your statements. And now, Mr. Collier, Doug Collier from SEIU filed complaint.
Thank you, Madam Chair and school board members. My name is Doug Collier. I reside at 3185 Hidden Creek Drive in Antioch, and I'm the president of SEIU Local 205. Yesterday, March 12th, I received what I assumed to be the school board's response to the complaints I filed on January the 10th. SEIU has had representatives at every school board meeting since the filing of the complaints, and we've not seen anywhere where our issues have been addressed by this board. Am I to assume this letter from the chair represents the board's lack of action, one way or the other, on our complaints? If this is the case, then I suggest workers' due process has been denied. What would it hurt this board to grant a hearing and listen to the worker issues regarding this complaint? As you are aware, the general public, our city council members, and our elected Davidson County delegation have all asked the school board to show respect for the support workers that you all were elected to represent. The contents of the letter I received from the chair yesterday is in stark contrast from the day she was running for this office and stood before these same support workers and pledged to always give them her unwavering support, to keep an open door, and to see that they were treated with dignity and respect. To this end, I will say, look all around. We do have a class war going on. It is the haves and the have-nots. When you have support workers in the school system, working hard every day, living in poverty, and making poverty wages, when you have one in every three children in Davidson County living in poverty, and when you have an establishment that denies these same workers a voice on the job, the establishment with a conscience has to look in the mirror and say, am I really a part of the solution or part of the problem? For some reason, all of the earlier groups I mentioned truly believe the school board has elected to isolate themselves from the rest of Davidson County. I ask you to reconsider your actions and be part of the solution in still making this divide grow wider in Davidson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collier. Representative Mike Turner, MNPS Support Staff Issues. Representative Mike Turner. We'll go on with Mr. James Brown, SEIU filed complaint.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I've been living in this county for about 20 years now. I love this town. I have a profound sense of ownership, and it happened -- and I had that sense of ownership before the flood, for whatever it's worth. This is my city. This is my schools. These are my children. It is important to understand that a community is a cohesive thing. It doesn't just consist of our own little niche in the world. You can't just work on student improvement scores. As Mr. Collier just pointed out, poverty is a serious problem among public school students, and yet this board pushed hundreds of Nashville families into poverty a couple of years ago. This board, with the bus driver, Dr. Register, bragged about in his State of the Schools address, where he was so proud of, he gave her a 15% pay cut, and then happily told her she's going to get 2% soon. Let me tell you, as somebody who feels a profound sense of citizenship in this city, I am profoundly disappointed in the behavior of this board, including you, Dr. Brennan, you're my district rep, and especially you, Dr. Register. I was here before you got here, and I suspect I'll be cleaning up the mess after you're gone.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to ask that you keep the noise level down, please. Thank you. Alma Sanford.
Good evening, and thank you for having me again. My name is Alma Sanford, and I'm here tonight because I am very concerned about what, in my view, is an abdication of duty by this board. When I, along with over a dozen others, came and spoke with you on Valentine's Day, it appeared to me that some of you -- well, and some of you didn't bother to even come to the public comment period, but some of you who were here who did come looked at us as though we were some pesky little fly that you would like to flitter away and that you don't want to be bothered with us. Guess what? We are those pesky little flies that elected you to represent all the people in this county. The way this elected body is choosing to hide behind vague policies and state laws, sometimes misinterpreted, is extremely offensive to the voters who elected you and to whom you owe a duty. You are avoiding the opportunity to take a stand and show true leadership for the 3,000-plus support staff employees who work each day in this county to provide quality service to our schools, our children, and our community. I am disappointed that so many of you are just looking the other way, while though not illegal, truly immoral grievances are taking place right before our eyes. The support employees deserve a voice in the process. They deserve respect and acknowledgement of their dignity. The work they do behind the scenes is -- to create a positive learning environment for our children is invaluable, yet you fail to show gratitude for their work. What will it take for you to wake up and care about all the people who work in our schools and not just the overpaid administrators who work in this building? Thank you.
And now, we'll move on to governance issues. Mr. North.
The consent agenda. A, approval of minutes, February 14, 2012, regular meeting. B, recommended award of contract for design services for miscellaneous small projects, the Larkin Group, MBOE 12-2. C, change order number one for gym AC projects at various schools, East Magnet and McGavick High Schools, Advanced Mechanical Contractors Incorporated, M-468. D, change order number two for Kane Ridge Elementary School, new building construction, Beaumar Construction Company Incorporated, M-475. E, change order number three for Madison Middle School Renovations, Robert S. Biscan and Company, M-417. F, change order number four for Glenview Elementary School additions, TG Constructors Incorporated, M-427. G, awarding of bids and contracts. One, Tennessee College Access and Success Network, it's grant. Two, Buck Institute for Education. Three, National Career Academy Coalition. Four, Above Average Academics LLC. Five, Vanderbilt University. Six, the Library Corporation. Seven, Pitney Bowes Global Financial Services LLC. H, recommended approval of legal settlement, file number L-15308, in the amount of $12,500. I, recommended approval of request for compulsory attendance waiver. And J, recommended approval of career and technical education and fine arts textbooks for business, arts and communications, health sciences, marketing, trade in industry, art, drama, and music. Madam Chair, that completes the consent agenda.
A move that we accept the consent agenda is rare. We have a motion. Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Steele, Jay Steele, recommendation to approve the contract for Country Music Television Incorporated to provide exclusive naming rights to the Academy of Digital Design at McGavick High School.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Chairman Porter. It's my pleasure to stand before you tonight and announce a contract that hopefully you'll approve tonight with the Country Music Television for the Academy of Digital Design at McGavick. This would be our fifth named academy in the district, and as you know, for naming rights, that a company has to partner with the school, both in kind and donations, to change the curriculum, to work alongside the teachers, and provide experiences for our kids within the theme of that academy. We have the Tennessee Credit Union, we have the Ford Motor Company, we have U.S. Community Credit Union, and at the last month, Gaylord Entertainment, and tonight, I have before us the Country Music Television Academy of Digital Design at McGavick High School. So, let me introduce tonight. We have Brian Phillips, the CEO of Country Music Television, and Sarah Gaffney, manager of Public Affairs, and Lucia Folk, the senior director for Public Affairs. Country Music Television represents -- has sent representatives on many trips for McGavick High School. On a Florida trip, that when I was in Florida, they came and met me for the first time there and saw the wonderful partnerships that were happening in Florida, and they vowed to match that or better that partnership here in Nashville, and they've done that. They've embraced the model. They've met with leadership at McGavick. They're committed to working with the teachers in the Academy of Digital Design and Communication. They encourage all of their employees and the McGavick High School Academy leadership to attend the screening Waiting for Superman to kick off the partnership. Their first major event was Avaya Community Day. Seventy-eight Country Music Television employees spent a day at McGavick speaking in classrooms, updating the auditorium equipment, painting the old HVAC room that was converted to a broadcast journalism studio, hosting career fair for academy students, and they subsequently supplemented equipment and furnishings in the studio, and they're embarking on doing the same in the audio technology studio. They've hosted externship for 10th grade team during the summer and supported them in their first fan-based award show at the school. The following summer, they hosted the 11th grade team. They also funded the externship and supported them through the Stones River Film Festival. Country Music Television has provided tours, shadowing internships for students. They've also hosted virtual enterprise competitions for the students. They're a partner that can be counted on to meet with the Ford Hub guests and VIP tours to discuss the partnership relationship, even jointly presented jointly at the National Career Academy Conference in November in Anaheim, California. Country Music Television has also supported the academy in its journey towards certification by providing feedback on certification notebooks and documentation, helping them backwards plan to achieve their goal of national accreditation. Brian Phillips is a member of the CEO Champions. Lucia Folk chairs the Arts and Media Partnership Council, and Sarah Gaffney chairs the Country Music Television Academy of Digital Design and Communication Advisory Board. The partnership is one that can best be summed up with Lucia's words during the governor's tour. Paula, our kids got to interview the governor. The academy teachers and students and the business partners are all on the same team. So, let me introduce Brian Phillips, the CEO of Country Music Television.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Very kind laundry list. It's been great fun and a great privilege for us to work with McGavick's Academy of Digital Design and Communications. Our employees have, I think, benefited greatly and have truly enjoyed this partnership through hosting teachers at our Nashville headquarters, which are very hard to reach in traffic today, by the way. Sorry, we're just a little bit late. We've hosted teachers, we've provided speakers in the classrooms, and it was our pleasure to build the school's broadcast studio. We love this program because it enables the most charismatic and giving people on our team to go in and share real-life, real-world experiences with students. And as a former high school student, I would have killed to have a program like this in my high school. And thank you very much for your consideration, for the privilege of being involved with McGavick. Thank you.
At this time, yes, at this time, I'll ask the team to come forward. We'll take a picture. We have Robin Wall, executive principal; Paula Barclay, academy coach; Cody Kimmel, academy principal; Lauren Winkates, the academy counselor; Martha Mitchell, a 10th grade team leader; Daniel Poston, the 12th grade team leader; Andrea Holland, the National Standards of Practice coordinator and also the English teacher; Barclay Randall, the broadcast journalism teacher. We'll come here to the center of the room, and we'll take a picture.
Kay.
Should we approve the contract first?
Kay. I mean Anna. I'm looking at the other Kay.
Yeah, take the picture after.
Before you guys leave, we would like for you to hear our motion. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the recommendation from Mr. Steele.
A move that we accept the academy.
Do we have a second? All in favor of the motion being made? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposes? As have it, motion carries. And Dr. Register?
Okay. This is Madam Chair, members of the board. This is a recommendation to certify charges for Donald Bryan Wood. I'll read the letter that you've received. Dear board members, I am writing to recommend the dismissal of Donald Bryan Wood from employment as a tenured teacher.
Thank you.
Brian, if I'm right.
Yes, at this time I'll ask the team to come forward, we'll take a picture. We have Robin Wall, Executive Principal, Paula Barclay, Academy Coach, Cody Kimmel, Academy Principal, Lauren Winkates, the Academy Counselor, Martha Mitchell, a 10th Grade Team Leader, Danielle Poston, the 12th Grade Team Leader, Andrea Holland, the National Standards of Practice Coordinator, and also the English Teacher, Barclay Randall, the Broadcast Journalism Teacher. We'll come here to the center of the room, and we'll take a picture.
Kay.
Should we approve the contract first?
Kay, I mean Anna. I'm looking at the other Kay.
Yeah, take the picture after.
Before you guys leave, we would like for you to hear our motion.
I wouldn't.
At this time, I will entertain a motion for the recommendation from Mr. Steele.
A move that we accept the academy.
Do we have a second? All in favor of the motion being made? Let it be known by saying aye. Opposes? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And Dr. Regster, you had something.
I just, I wanted to recognize the team, so Jay did that. Thanks, Jay, and thanks, thanks, Robin.
Dr. Regster, you can mention the fact that McGavick now has three named and branded academies of the five that we have in Nashville.
Little editorial there. I guess the rest of us will have to catch up, so look out. Okay, Dr. Regster?
Okay. This is Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a recommendation to certify charges for Donald Brian Wood. I'll read the letter that you've received. Dear Board Members, I am writing to recommend the dismissal of Donald Brian Wood from employment. As a tenured teacher with Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools pursuant to TCA subsection 49-5-511, I have charged him with incompetence, inefficiency, neglect of duty, unprofessional conduct, or conduct unbecoming to a member of the teaching profession, and insubordination, which are all grounds for his dismissal pursuant to Tennessee Code Annotated 49-5-511. These terms are specifically defined in Tennessee Code Annotated 49-5-501. Evidence supporting these charges was set forth in my letter to Donald Brian Wood on February 28, 2012, a copy of which is attached. I am asking you to certify these charges by voting that if proven true, these charges warrant Mr. Wood's dismissal. Should you certify these charges, I will inform Mr. Wood of your action and formally advise him of the right to request a hearing before an impartial hearing officer. At the present time, I am only asking you to certify the charges. I am not asking you to weigh evidence either for or against dismissal. I am merely asking you to vote that if, that the charges, if proven true, warrant dismissal. If Mr. Wood requests a hearing, it will occur at some point in the future. Accordingly, it is my recommendation that Donald Brian Wood be dismissed from employment with the Metropolitan Nashville Public Schools.
Do we have a motion?
A move to certify the charges.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Regster. And we're on number four. This is the recommendation of approval of removing the comprehensive from high schools at Antioch, Kane Ridge, Glen Cliff, Hillsborough, Hillwood, Hunter's Lane, Maplewood, McGavick, Overton, Pearl Cone, Stratford, and White Creek. And Dr. Brandon, I'm going to ask that we go through four and five, since you are the committee chairperson for those.
Yes, Madam Chairman. Committee met and recommended that we go forward with the approval based on recommendations from principals. And Mr. Steele, would you like to mention some of the background for that?
Sure. In the past, the high schools in Nashville were truly comprehensive in offering very like services to a broad range of students throughout the district. As we have moved into specialization away from generalization, the high schools are now starting to specialize in key areas such as a STEM Magnet High School at Stratford, an entertainment magnet school at Pearl Cone, and an international program at Hillsborough High School. So the schools are starting to specialize, and the principals feel that the comprehensive term does not represent what's happening in the schools. And as we move into more discussions about school choice, it does open up that it would not be a true comprehensive high school based on the definition of what a comprehensive high school would be. So this was the recommendation of the principals to drop the name comprehensive from their titles of their schools.
Thank you. And so, Madam Chair, the committee recommends approval of this change.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in second. Any questions?
Just briefly. This is, this is a changing of a name. This is taking the name comprehensive out of the high school names, where most people don't use the term comprehensive when talking about the high school names anyway, and the term comprehensive is, is really outdated, and that's, that's the only, right? I mean, that's, that's his change.
And Madam Chair, we also noted in our committee meeting that there would be some additional cost in changing those signs at each of those schools.
Exactly.
I think it should be noted, too, that the principals were for this taking the word comprehensive off. That's important, too.
So all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes carry, and a motion to remove the comprehensive from the schools we named earlier. And number five, another recommendation from the committee, approval of naming the academic, I mean, the academy at Hickory Hall, Dr. Brandon, you can go on with that one as well.
Yes, Madam Chair, as you know, we have held the Opry Mills Academy at Hickory Hall this school year. We are planning to move the Opry Mills back to the Opry Mills Academy. And so, we want to, pending approval for the Hickory Hall Academy, we would like it to be named the Academy at Hickory Hall.
Do we have a second on Dr. Brandon's motion? We have a second. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Brandon, and I'm sure we'll be looking forward to the academy moving back and the third academy, which will be in the Nashville area, so thank you so very much. Okay, Dr. Regster?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the audience. We have major work that's gone on in looking at human capital development over the past, really, two years in our, in our reform strategy in the school district. That, that TLG has been renamed asset, and I'll recognize Dr. June Kill now and other members of staff, the staff to speak, to give the report on asset. June?
I'm very pleased and proud to be a part of this leadership group, Transformational Leadership Group Asset. All the groups are important, and every co-chair thinks that his or her chair is the most important. But ours deals directly with the effective teacher in the classroom, that research has shown is one of the single factors in the success of our children. So we are all very pleased to be a part of this group and make this presentation to you tonight. I'd like to introduce my co-presenters. First, Mr. Paul Fleming, Principal at Keene Fog. Casey Hogner was formerly with the New Teacher Project, she's moving on to new ventures now, but she was here when this work was done, and I wanted her to be here to be a part of the presentation tonight. Two of our members could not attend, Katie Kerr, who has been instrumental in this work, and also Mrs. Stugard, who was one of the most impressive young teachers I have ever seen. She is a teacher at Stratford High School, and she has worked hard with this group. Tonight, we have four topics that we would like to go over. First of all, why asset? Why is asset needed? The progress that we have made last year, and then the progress that we are planning to make in the future, and then, of course, we will allow time for questions and answers. And if I'm lucky, I'll get this right the first time, but it will be the first time I've ever been lucky, so let's see. See? I told you. Who can show me how to operate this? Thank you, Visia. I am not in the IT Transformational Group.
We'll just have a work session for you.
That would be helpful. Okay. First of all, why asset? We have many things that go into the goal of making an effective teacher. Recruitment, hiring, development, evaluation, compensation, all of them are structurally necessary in order for us to have an effective teacher in every classroom. But unfortunately, many times, all of these structures are working, but they're all going in different directions with the same goal. It reminds me a little bit of my childhood at the fairgrounds playing bumper cars, where we all had good intentions, but we were bumping into one another along the way. Many times, that is the way we operate. The purpose of asset is to find the best teacher, to develop the best teacher, and get that teacher in front of our children with the compensation and the structure that will retain that teacher for her career with our students. So we are looking for alignment. Alignment of preparation, recruitment and hiring, induction, developing and evaluating, and retaining and rewarding our students. In preparation, we are looking at teachers who come from traditional teacher education programs, and we are also looking at teachers, and this is a fairly new development, who are coming to us through alternative routes. Teachers who, teaching is their second career. They have come to us from business or industry and are now working with our students in areas where they have expertise. Many of these teachers go through an education program in order to get their certification. However, we have working in Metro now with the New Teacher Project, a certification program through which we, through the New Teacher Project, will actually certify these teachers. Something that's new and exciting for this district. Recruiting and hiring, of course, is a main focus, something that we are working on very, very heavily in my department, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in the future. Induction is important, because it's not just enough to have a properly prepared teacher and a hired teacher. You have to bring that teacher in, place them carefully where they will be successful mentor and development, develop them throughout their career, which leads, of course, into development and evaluation. And I think we all know that evaluation or performance management has been a key focus area this year for all of us. And finally, retain and reward. Through differentiated pay, of course, salary is always important, but also by allowing them to have leadership roles and other roles outside of the classroom while still remaining with our students. Unfortunately, as you saw in the first slide, where we had several different things with good intentions going in different directions, it becomes piecemeal. For example, a significant recruitment initiative is implemented, so we double the number of applicants, and we have higher caliber applicants. A large number of vacancies are filled with new teachers eager to begin teaching. However, the lack of high-quality induction and support results in these teachers leaving in significant turnover. Then we have a high number of vacancies, so we double our recruitment efforts and hire more teachers, all of that leading to what we call a revolving door strategy. In 2011, 2012, asset has made we feel significant progress in this area, but we recognize we have a long way to go. For example, in preparation, we have identified the issues, we have begun working with our higher ed teacher preparation institutions around student teaching in order to have our students better prepared when they come to us straight from college. We've had a big change in our recruitment strategies. We have hired a new person in my department, Ms. Shereen Douglas, who is specifically responsible for teacher recruitment, as well as recruitment of our support employees. And she has rebranded, renamed, and she is making a significant difference in our recruiting. We have, we have our I-zone that we're working with, with Mr. Alan Coverstone. We have worked closely with him in the recruiting of teachers and support staff specifically for the I-zone. New marketing and branding, I wish I had with me tonight a picture of our new brochure and the canvas that we carry on recruitment, where we have a dear precious child out on the playground, and our slogan is calling all role models. And this is the branding that we're taking out on recruiting with us. Hiring has been moved up to March, and since, and we are making significant inroads in that. And one thing that is added since this slide was prepared, we are planning and, well, we're more than in the planning stage, we are having an MNPS recruitment fair that our principals will be asked to attend. It will be purely voluntary for them, but we will bring ready-to-interview, and we will be ready to offer contracts to our Teach for America candidates, our new teacher fellows, but also those teachers that we have met on recruitment that we feel are strong and that we are willing to make early commitments to. It will be invitation only. We are expecting around 500 to 800 applicants to show, and our principals to show, and we will be ready to make commitments that day. Induction. This year, we revamped our orientation. In the past, our orientation consisted of, let me tell you what you have to do to get your license, let me tell you about your benefits, a little bit about our policies, and the smattering of curriculum. This year, we changed it to a full week of induction focused primarily on curriculum and helping prepare them for their first year in the classroom. Developing and evaluating. I know you're all aware of our new director for professional development, and I'm going to get her name right tonight, Susan Thompson. Is that correct, Dr. Regster? Thank you. I said it incorrectly at our TLG meeting. We have our instructional coaches in place for on-site professional development. You are all aware of our new evaluation program that's in place for our teachers. It has been very successful here in Nashville, a large part due to the work of central office staff and our principals, but also, I must mention, we have a dedicated position, the only one I know of in the state, Dr. Brenda King, who has been responsible for coordinating our efforts, getting information to our principals and teachers, and asking, taking their questions when needed. We have been going through our professional development and aligning it to the evaluation criteria with the goal of, if I did not score well on this particular criteria, I could go to a PD portal, click on that criteria, and it would take me to every resource within Metro schools that I can go to to get stronger in that area. And in retention and rewarding, just last night, we inducted our second cohort into our Teacher Leadership Institute. Our first cohort is finishing up. It's been an exciting venture for all of them. I've heard nothing but good things, and we're excited about our second group coming through. They are being prepared for leadership positions, but not leadership positions as a principal or as an assistant superintendent for HR, but leadership positions like grade chair, things that will give them opportunities outside the classroom, but will still keep them working with our students. Strategic compensation has been a focus. We have our TIF grant, which we are working with under the federal grant this year, that will provide extra compensation to teachers who meet specific criteria and specific goals. Now, we are moving into our recommendations for next year, and I'm going to turn the first section of this over to Casey Hogner. Casey?
Thank you, Dr. Kill. We are very excited to go through the next few slides with you. You saw that, that whole line, that pipeline, that continuum, that we are hoping to attract and retain the best, the best and brightest teachers here in the state of Tennessee. And we're, we actually have draft recommendations across all of those areas of the continuum. So I am going to start with preparation. We'll also talk a little bit about recruitment, and then I will hand it off to Principal Fleming to talk about what is going on once we actually get our teachers here in MNPS and keep them. So that first, that first block in that pipeline is preparing our teachers and making sure that we understand what's going on in teacher preparation programs, and they understand what's going on with, with us here in Metro Nashville, and what we need, what our, our buildings need, and what our students need. So we are actually having a recommendation to do a dean's forum. This forum would be an annual event, a day-long event, that would bring together leadership from local teacher preparation programs, both traditional route and alt route, as well as the leadership here in the district, to really make sure, to give them a formal opportunity to create and deepen the relationships, provide a channel for communication that might not be as formally created. be as formally created right now, and then make sure that we're passing best practices, information, and solutions to challenges back and forth. So the logistics of this event and the recommendations, we would hope to have a day-long event, and invited participants would include both leadership from the programs and from Metro Nashville. We do want to open and close hearing from Dr. Register, allowing him to highlight what's important to us here in the district, but also highlight some of the great work we've already done with some teacher preparation programs. I know that he has initiatives already in place. And then, this forum would not just be formal speeches, but would include brainstorming times, small group sessions to work out challenges, panels where we can hear about best practices and share those, and networking time to give us an opportunity to build these relationships. We are really looking for outcomes that would include successes for both Metro Nashville and for our teacher preparation programs. So we are really hoping to create some of these connections or deepen some of these connections with our teacher preparation programs, and they should leave the forum with deeper relationships with our leadership. They know who to call if they have a question, they have a relationship with someone that they can reach out to. Also, an understanding of our priorities. We are looking into deeper content expertise, for instance, on the academies in high school. We're looking for a more streamlined approach in science, technology, engineering, and math. All of these things are things our teacher preparation programs should know, so they are preparing our teachers to be able to be successful in this new environment that we're creating here in Metro Nashville. We also want them to share best practices with each other. We know that there are some great programs in the state that are doing really great things, and we want to make sure that we're sharing and providing a conduit to share that information across programs, and make sure that the programs have an opportunity to tell us about themselves. Teacher preparation programs are unique. We want to give them an opportunity to sell themselves, so our recruitment and HR teams know who to call when they're looking for specific teachers with specific expertise. And also, you know, make sure that we understand the channels and create those connections, and we have a clear expectation for student teaching, which is something that you heard Dr. Keel talk about already. We want to make sure we know that there are challenges and barriers that could come with changes in our evaluation system, et cetera, to student teaching. We want to make sure that we have an opportunity to solve those in a proactive way. So that is the first, that first bullet of teacher preparation. I now want to move on to our second piece of that continuum, which is recruitment. We have done a lot this year. You've already heard Dr. Keel talk about the great changes that we've already made in recruitment, hiring Shereen Douglas, who has put together a very comprehensive strategy, the rebranding, and she's already reaching out and doing a lot of great things. We want to make sure that we're taking that a step further in understanding where are we going to get really amazing teachers that are going to be the best that we can, that we could get for here in Nashville. And one of the things that we feel strongly about is this ability to grow our own. Right now, with the career academies, we are seeing some fantastic high schoolers come up through our ranks, and we want to keep those folks here in Nashville, especially if they are interested in the teaching profession. We want to be the best place to work as far as having our great teachers here. And so we have put together a few recommendations to kind of grow our own teachers and keep them here in Nashville. We already have the Antioch Academy of Teaching and Service, and we want to be able to encourage and reward those students with a pathway to return to MNPS after they continue their post-secondary work. We want to have perhaps a curriculum for summer programming that they could serve as aids to summer programs that's already happening in Metro Nashville, and give them an ability to start honing that craft and get them in to see what's going on here in the classrooms from the other point of view. We also know that there is a governor's school here in Tennessee for teacher preparation. We want to be able to connect the dots there, encourage students who have great potential to start and to continue that governor's school in the summer, but also to then keep those students here in Nashville once they finish that program and finish their post-secondary. This, we could encourage and reward these students perhaps by providing scholarships to participants in summer programming to attend local universities for degrees in education, or we could provide other types of incentives, i.e., perhaps a signing bonus for teachers who are coming back, who may have graduated from an MNPS school. So these are just some of our ideas that we would, you know, like your feedback on as far as that grow-your-own strategy for recruitment. Other recruitment recommendations we have, developing relationships with local universities to develop dual enrollment for prospective education majors. We know that there are some opportunities, there are some model programs out there that we could implement here, perhaps a teacher cadet program to encourage some dual enrollment education experiences. There is a national template out there that we can look at to see if that would be something that we could implement here, perhaps through one of the academies of teaching and service that we already have. We also think it's important to grow connections with math and science. This is an area where we know it is slightly harder to find excellent teachers in science and math, especially in high school with the more advanced subjects. We want to make sure as we're developing these STEM schools here in Nashville that we have great teachers for those students. And so really looking for particular preparation programs where we can go and target recruitment of these great teachers, and we've got a couple listed here. SkyTeach at Western Kentucky, MTSU, UT Chattanooga, and VolsTeach at University of Tennessee, Knoxville. So these are some we've identified that we think we need to put a little extra focus on to make sure we're getting the teachers we need for these great programs. So what do we do when we have these teachers? We've worked with our preparation programs, we've recruited them, we've incentivized and encouraged them to get here. How do we keep them in MNPS? And for those recommendations, I'm going to turn it over to Principal.
Well, thank you, Casey, and good evening. And I also want to point out that Missy Stugard, who's our Stratford teacher, who's not here tonight, is a proud MNPS grad and Hume-Faul graduate as well, so I had to throw that in there. But we are excited and to look at, talking about professional learning networks, this is crucial. We know that we need good teachers, we need to keep them in Metro, and we know that they often leave, not just Metro but nationally, for reasons even other than pay, but about structures and support. And so these next two recommendations are about support and also about the structures that we put in place. I thought this was interesting because we went to tribal group presented to the principals at the winter retreat in January. They had a list after working with thousands of schools that are both poor-performing and high-performing schools. If you look at this list, how good teaching is crucial for high-performing schools. And that's everything from positive visible leadership to the continual feedback loop that teachers need to be engaged in, the culture of belief that teachers need to believe that every child can advance and grow, and that everybody in the building knows the data. And so this strikes me as just some background about how we structure and help our teachers in a positive way. This also fits very nicely with the container or the structure that we need for teachers because we know we have so many talented teachers in MNPS, but it's about how do we provide the container for them to grow? And how do we, especially as a high school principal, I know that these factors that you see are meaningful to teachers. They want to collaborate, they want to share ideas with each other, they want structures for distributed leadership, and they want those opportunities in different ways, within their team, within their department, within their grade level, and have numerous opportunities. And these are all components that make up high-performing schools nationally as well, all of those components. So it leads to our third recommendation, which is to form professional learning networks of teachers that are cluster-specific. So they are in each school, but they have opportunities within each school to be assigned a coach or instructional mentor, and that's where our instructional coaches come into play, that they are assigned a professional leading network, professional learning network team, and that those teams are both at the building level and at the cluster level. So again, they have that structure and that container of support, both with a mentor teacher and also through the instructional coach model, especially in the first nine weeks. I'm fortunate to work with the Teaching and Learning Urban, the TLUS program, that's the partnership between Vanderbilt and Metro Schools, and I work with those teachers once a month, every Saturday, every Saturday, or one Saturday a month, and see that they really need that support, and they value that cohort model and that support of creating meaningful partnerships, both with mentor teachers and with each other. And so this is trying to scale that up, that idea of having teachers who are especially in that first five years, that vulnerable stage, to be able to form networks both in the building and in their cluster. And the idea would be that these clusters would provide a menu of options. So you'd have training both for a standardized menu of training that teachers would be receiving, but also some optional items that teachers could receive because we know the cluster needs are different across the city. And so that would be tailoring and customizing those needs as we go through. We would also try to tap into technology and the rollout, both from Edmodo, which is an online system for K through 8, and also through Gradespeed and the PD portal that we'll talk about in a moment for the high school level as well. So all of those would be through this creation of the professional learning networks. This gets us to this next fourth recommendation about really having a portal. We know we live in a 24/7 world that teachers can go on and talk to each other and gain information through a portal that is recognized for professional development. And these would be some of the questions that teachers, if they had, about what do they want to do, what information can they glean, especially with the new evaluation system? So if they're struggling with a particular area, they could go on to the PD portal and get information. And this would look in different ways like this. I'll just get right to, if, for example, they were under the evaluation system, these are the 12 pieces that fall under the instructional domain in the evaluation system, and they needed more information and more help with their peers, this could be rolled out in various ways. This could be through lesson plans that are aligned. We know that the common core structure is coming and is already here, here and across the nation. This could be the group of videos, especially through the Mike Rutherford Artist and Teacher Training, that teachers could tap into about getting extra help. It could be through linking with other teachers through their professional learning network. It could be taking online courses through ERO, and it could also be a research and reading section as well. So we envision kind of the Walmart approach of one-stop shopping for their professional development needs through this portal and building that out. And so that would be the fourth recommendation about how teachers can gain access both in school, but maybe even more importantly, out of school and online to get the help. So we know we've covered a lot of ground for that, but I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Keel for questions that you may have about all of the work that this asset TLG's been doing.
And I'll be happy to play Vanna White, and you can ask me a question, and I will say Paul. Casey? So if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions?
I have a couple of questions. Let's start with. When you were talking to the recruiting piece about, where specifically do you recruit? Colleges and universities, or do you just stay in Tennessee or Nashville area?
It's primarily colleges and universities, but we do not stay just in Tennessee or just in the Nashville area. We have found that most of our students come from the South and South, and most of our teachers, I'm sorry, our new teachers come from the South and the Southeast. So we focus on that area, going up into Kentucky, throughout Tennessee, Georgia, Mississippi, Alabama, Florida. We are extending that. We are reaching out to our universities that have a high Hispanic population. We're going into Texas and with other universities. We are also focusing on diversity and going to historically black universities to do our recruitment. So while we are focusing on the general South and Southeast, we are branching out. We've gone up into Indiana. We were planning on going to a huge recruitment fair in New York for that entire area of the country, but unfortunately, that one was canceled, so we were not able to go.
Do you recruit current teachers or just college graduates?
I would love to go into some of our neighboring school systems and hang my sign, but unfortunately, most of those HR directors know my address, so I don't do that. So we concentrate on colleges and universities.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons?
First of all, this is a culture change that you're doing, and the asset is really providing that culture change. And I have, I've sat in on some early meetings, and there's, you've worked so hard on every aspect of it, and I commend you. And because it is a culture change, I would like to ask you, on this slide you did, the recommendations for professional learning networks specifically brought this up. I'm just wondering about the timetable to implement this, that you'll see it in the effectiveness of new teachers and to see them, does it, will it take a generation, will it take four years?
It can't take a generation. We don't have that long.
Yeah, no, I know you don't, but will it help? I mean, I'm considering a generation, four years.
I know, I know.
Not my generation.
Yeah.
But how do you see it?
Paul has been working most extensively with that, so let me let Paul answer that question for you.
Yeah, I think that's a great question. I think already in the district, it exists informally and across the clusters, and we have often, you know, many new teachers come in and will be assigned a master teacher or mentor teacher, perhaps within their department, let's say, at the high school level. But this is to really say, how do we embed it in each cluster, in each school? And I think if we're smart, it's not even a financial issue because we already have the instructional coaches in place, we have the infrastructure. It's again, how are we intentional about mentoring in that first year specifically? So I think it's being done, it's being done in pockets, and so it's how we roll that out, and that's always the issue. But I'm hopeful that this is not a four-year issue, that we can do this fairly quickly because we have the instructional coaches in every cluster and every tier level as well, along with veteran teachers that would be willing.
I think just to build on this, we are now kind of building this in our systems already. Now we have the veteran teachers that have come through our Teacher Leadership Institute can be a great asset here, and we can also build this on to the induction that we've already, you know, Dr. Keel and her team have already created and rolled out last year. We're planning on making changes to that, and this could be a build on from that. So a teacher's kind of inducted, they have a system, a support system that will follow them, and we have, just like Paul was saying, we already have a lot of that infrastructure in place. It's just being very intentional about connecting the dots.
Mr. Hayes?
I also commend your presentation this evening, and I'm delighted to see the changes that you guys are making. I've spent a lot of time thinking about our previous hiring practices and certainly advocating for an accelerated hiring timeline. I'm thrilled that we're talking about realistically March. I'm wondering if, is it fair to say that by the middle of April, we'll have at a minimum made offers to 80% of our projected demand for next year?
Yes. We are really looking toward April the 21st, that recruiting fair, in not only being able to commit a position, but being able to commit a position at a specific school, at a specific grade level, or in a specific subject area. Teachers will make a commitment for a position, for a general position only for so long. They want to know where they're going to be and what they're going to teach, and preferably what room they're going to be in. Gracie is nodding. And by this new initiative, this MNPS recruitment fair, I think we'll be able to tell them everything but the room number, so.
As you say, place the teacher, it's really marry the teacher with the building.
Yes.
We're not, we're not now assigning teachers to buildings when the principal doesn't want them. The principal has some authority to say, yes, I'd like to hire this.
Yes. Now, I'm not going to say that will never happen because there will always be an exception. But Dr. Register has made it clear, and I have followed through with that and made commitments to principals, that they will have a voice in the teachers that come to their classrooms.
When you say a voice, they'll.
I mean, they will say yes or no.
Yes, thank you. On your, on the second page, and this kind of brought up another question for me, the what's the problem side slide, you have an evaluation tab. I'm wondering where are we in return, where are we in terms of digitizing our records? I'm wondering where are we in return, where are we in terms of digitizing our records and having one file for teachers? I know that we've had historically files in the building and files here, and sometimes as we evaluate folks, they don't both get reviewed.
Right.
Have we completed the process of integrating our files and making it so that if there's a teacher question about someone in the building and Dr. Register calls you and asks about it, you have all of the information at your disposal about that teacher?
I'm going to say absolutely yes in one area, and we're moving in that direction in another. As far as the evaluation is concerned, we are using the state website, and principals actually enter their evaluation data and comments into that website. It had, the access to the website has varying security levels. The principal at Hume Fog, for example, can only see his teachers. In my office, Brenda King, who handles the evaluation, Dr. Register can see every teacher in the district. If teachers are moving from school to school, we can switch the privilege on for a specific teacher, for a specific principal. So that has been started this year, has been initiated by the state, and we are using that extensively. As far as the personnel files, we are hoping to move toward document imaging. It is an expensive process to go through and a very time-consuming process, but Dr. Register has been very supportive of it, so I'm hoping we'll be able to move that direction in the near future.
We do not have a timeline for that. Is that...
No, I do not have a timeline. I can't give that. A lot of that depends on the budget.
It's all dollars, Mike.
Well, I thought it was already funded and it was underway. So we're going to continue to have issues where you may not have all the facts about somebody because there could be a file in the building.
That's true.
Mr. Kendall?
June, I don't want you to say I'm coming to complicate the issue, but on the principal, the question that Michael was raising about the principals involved, how does that work? And the reason I ask this, some principals will say, well, I didn't, you know, I got these people when they came here. You've probably heard that thousands of times. And that is a somewhat of a time correlation. You know, if we're hiring in the spring, for example, and teacher won't know what school they're going to and all, and we don't even have a principal hired there yet, because there are some schools, especially in our innovation zones, where we're changing principals, and other schools where we're changing principals, that may not be changed until June or July. How then does that principal have an impact on who's hired at that school if they're after the person has been? I know you got a pool, you know, math, science teachers, et cetera, but how does that principal get engaged prior to that person being hired in that position? Because I think it's extremely important that, I personally think it's extremely important that a principal have as much involvement in who's in that building as possible. So how do we deal with that kind of situation?
Let me answer that two ways. First of all, we're working very closely with Dr. Hall and Ms. Steele and Mr. Steele as they are working to make staffing changes in the schools, and hopefully, we will have that far enough along where the prospective principals will be able to come to the fair. That's the hope. If it doesn't, we can't turn a school inside out when a new principal is selected in June or July. That's just the way it will be. We have found that it's not effective to completely empty a school and start all over again many times. So all of that to say is that we are trying to move proactively and making those decisions earlier than we have in the past, but through things that no one can control, we will have situations where a principal inherits a school.
It should be a much easier year in terms of the number of displaced teachers that we have. Last year, we cut about 300 teaching positions with the end of the federal stimulus, the jobs money and the stimulus money. And when you think about having that many positions lost in a school district and having to place people, that really complicates the issue. Actually, they did very well in placing people very much earlier last year than I thought they would be able to because of the very high number of displaced people that we had in the system last year. We really don't anticipate that this year. As you know, our class sizes grew bigger. We're growing as a school system, so we don't anticipate a high number of displaced teachers in the district, and it's really a priority for us to name principals and have principals on board so that they can be intimately involved in the hiring of teachers. And in particular, we don't want to leave schools that might happen not to have a principal wait and be last. And so, you know, so we're, and I include Mr. Coverstone in with three associate superintendents about a person who is making decisions about principal appointments. That's first. Then we hire teachers, and we try to do it as quickly as we can. I think June and her staff have done, and I was talking to her about this in executive staff the other day, have done a good job of, we're early identifying people that we want to hire and put on board, the high flyers, but the assignment is dependent upon a principal, and a lot of them at that job fair that's coming up, saying, yes, this is a good match. My position, my school is a good match for you. Will you come work with me at my school? And I think that's an approach that will be very different and very much more effective than what we've done in the past.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking about the principal, this is just one example, but the principal was hired in July, for example.
Right.
And the teachers have been hired by that facility, and this principal's coming in as a change agent, you know, one who really is a dynamic principal, and they know of teachers that they have dealt with, that they want in particular positions for that culture of that school. You know, that's the kind of situation that may be important, may not be, but you know, good math.
Well, it is important.
We've got two principals on the board here, we could speak to that, but I...
Well, Mr. Kendall, I can speak to that from a personal standpoint, moving from one school to another in July and inheriting the staff. But you go in and you do the very best that you can with those, and then you make your modifications as time goes on, but it's very difficult for a principal to go in and just empty the building totally.
I don't suggest that.
But even going into the building, principals always try to get to know the staff that's there, and some may opt to leave and some may opt to stay a little bit longer. But yes, it is difficult in both situations because the teachers are there and having a new principal to come in, so they have to get used to the new principal as well as the new principal getting used to them.
Mr. Kendall, if I could add, Casey just reminded me, and I appreciate her doing that, is that more and more principals are using a leadership team at their school, so they alone are not making the decision about which teachers come to their school. So even though the principal may leave, that leadership team has had a part in that decision, and that leadership team will still be there.
Mr. North and Dr. Brandon?
I just have a comment. Ever since I've been on the board, and I've probably since before that, we've talked about the need for earlier hiring of teachers, better orientation for new teachers, and I want to thank you for getting it done.
Well, I can't take the credit.
And I mean...
I would love to.
I mean, everybody is involved.
That's right.
And I'm looking forward to, I mean, it was a consensus, it was unanimous, everybody knew it needed to be done, but it's hard to make that change. And we appreciate the effort and looking forward to the fruit of that effort.
Well, I thank you, and it has been truly wonderful this year to work in a situation, not only from Dr. Register, but from the people that I work with every day that are looking forward to a change and are anxious to do anything they can to make it work. It has been a pleasure this year to work with that.
Dr. Brandon?
Yes, my question is, how much of a commitment does the teacher make once she has said that she will, or he or she will stay, will work at that school? Once they get in the city and find an apartment in another section that's not close to their school, are they going to be able to change their assignments?
We don't like for that to happen. It does happen. Once they make a commitment to a school, we expect them to go to that school. If circumstances change and they want to go to another school, two things would have to happen. First, the principal of the school they are currently assigned would have to say, okay, I feel I can replace you, and the principal of the receiving school would have to say, okay, I want you. Those two things would have to be in place before we would agree to that move.
Dr. Gentry?
I was just curious as to whether or not you had any projected targets on the impact of retention that these initiatives will have. Eventually, the question will come is, what do you think will be the impact on student achievement if there's more consistency in the teacher population and in the environment, right? Because every time you make a change in a teacher, the culture has a potential to be impacted. So have you given any thought to what impact on retention? And I won't push the student achievement one just yet, but at least on retention that these initiatives will have.
I don't know that we've set a specific target. I'll turn to Casey and Paul. However, our retention rate now for five years is at about, it's close to 60%. That's not high enough. That means we're losing 40% of our teachers and having constant churn. Certainly, we wanted to get much higher than that, but as far as a specific target, I cannot give that to you tonight.
Anything you want to add, Casey?
Yeah, there are a couple of things that we've looked at. We've spent a little bit of time looking at different pipelines. So when we're talking about recruitment pipelines, which preparation programs, et cetera, they have different retention rates. So we've spent a little bit of time looking at that and thinking, okay, historically, this pipeline produces teachers that stay longer, and I know that Shereen and her team are evaluating that as a piece of data when they're looking at a comprehensive recruitment strategy. And I also have anecdotes for you. This year, we've, you know, we've gone through now two selection seasons with the Teacher Leadership Institute. We brought on members of the first TLI class to service selectors, and I heard more than one of them say, you know what, I was, the same time I was applying for TLI here, I was applying for jobs in Williamson County, or I was applying for an assistant principal position in a different school. One teacher even said, I was thinking about leaving the district, I was applying for a sales job. And just the fact that we invested in them as a district through the TLI, gave them a leadership opportunity, recognized them, and they're now helping to keep teachers here. I know that's just an anecdote of those 28 teachers, but I've heard more than one of them say, I was going to leave MNPS and now I'm not because I feel strongly about the commitment that Dr. Register is making, and that there are programs in place now that this is the type of place I want to be.
Have you put a price tag on these initiatives?
Dr. Register said to do whatever we needed to do. No, I don't have a specific price tag.
Ms. Simmons and then Mr. Kendall? I just want to ask a quick question. If you're doing the early recruitment, if 80% of your teachers will be hired in March or maybe April, how do you know how many spots you'll have? Are you asking teachers to make, let their intentions, whether they're planning on being hired or not be known?
There are a couple of things, there are a couple of things that we're doing. We are asking teachers, in fact, last year, we sent out a...
What did you call it, Casey, your survey?
Declaration of intent.
Yes, an intent.
Are you going to be doing that again this year?
But where we asked teachers to let us know their plans. Now, we weren't saying, we're going to hold you to this, you know, if you say this, you've got to do it, but that helps us determine needs. We have a retirement incentive that is extremely lucrative for payment of sick days to encourage teachers who are looking at retirement to make those decisions early, by January the 15th, as a matter of fact, that is the date. We have our projections, our student projections, which includes the staffing projections. That is going out earlier than it ever has before. When I first came to the district, we were still sending out projections in June. Now that office is able to get those projections out in early April, which lets principals know what changes they're going to have in staffing as a result of changes in the student population. That's never going to prevent the teacher to resign at the last minute. That's always going to happen, but there are several things in place to help principals get to know that earlier.
Mr. Kendall?
June, how well are we doing with, I know I read to say highly effective, but I do teach you, you really go out and just say highly qualified.
Right.
Highly effective, but highly qualified and highly effective teachers, which are those who've been there for a while and proven. How well are we doing recruiting and retaining these kinds of teachers in high-need schools?
Well, I think the work that we're doing with Alan Coverstone, with the IZON, is a perfect example of what we're attempting to do. Alan has worked with our office and has defined what we are terming the I-teacher, which is the qualities that best fit our high-need schools. To the point, we have an online screen interview that we are already using with teachers to help us identify those teachers who have the talent to become a highly effective teacher, but we have added on to that in cooperation with Alan and his staff, and Shereen could tell you the exact title, I can't. But it is a program in which teachers ask specific questions, and those questions are research-based into, if you answer this way, then there is a good chance that you will be a highly effective teacher at a high-need school. And we are asking everybody to go through that set of questions so we can screen those teachers that we feel will be best effective. This is a new practice that we're just putting in place this year, so we're all really anxious to see how that's going to play out.
Is that screen available? I'm not going to plan for a teacher job, but I'd like to see those questions.
Sure, sure. I think if you get in touch with Alan or Shereen Douglas in my office, they will be glad to share those.
You can go on the fast track and get certified.
We'll get you certified. We can do it in a year, Mr. Kendall.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you so much. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm excited when I heard all of that you did last week at Martin, it was just, my brain just started going. Also, I mentioned to Katie that we have a lot of metro school graduates who are now teachers in the system, and I would like to see us grow our own within the system. And I was talking briefly with Mr. Steele over at Stratford earlier in the week about starting back the Future Teacher Program again, the organization that I went through as a student in high school. I think that's a start for us to look at doing and really recruiting from within.
Yes, I agree, and that's going to be one of our areas of focus.
Yeah, and I'm more than happy to work with you on that.
Thank you.
More than happy. Thank you. And now, I just have a brief report on the, from TSBA, I worked with a group of students on last Friday from across the state as a team leader for up-and-coming school board members, hopefully one day. We had about three, pretty close to 400 students last Friday downtown at Tennessee State University, downtown campus. And these students came in primarily for a full day of instructions on how a school board, how school boards operate, and also a mock meeting. So we had to do one of those within the classroom. I had about... I had about 30 students and very bright young people, I must say, from across the state. And they had to select their school board members. And we did it in a very creative way. We had individuals that volunteered, and they had to use one word to describe themselves, you know, as to how they would perform as a school board member. So we didn't vote on names, we voted on their term that they used, and it was highly, highly effective. The students did not just vote for the individual, but they vote for what they stood for in that one word. So I thought that was creative to, to get sophomores, juniors, and seniors working. They conducted the meeting themselves, the superintendent, they elected the superintendent as well, and they discussed a hot issue on, you know, Facebook, having a Facebook reaction between the student and the teacher. So it was quite interesting to hear what those young people had to say. They also had to listen to public participation during their school board meeting. The person had one minute to speak because of time, so therefore they went through, and some very constructive information came out of that. Then they had to vote on the issue, and I must say, they voted unanimously not to have interaction between the teacher and the student on Facebook. These were the young people voting on their own. Also, they selected one student that would represent our group in the large session in the afternoon and after lunch, and this person had to really get on stage with several other individuals to really plead their case in, in an issue. They had to really be either on the pro side or the con side. And I must say that our young man from our group, group number nine, won the presidency for next year, so he will serve as the president of this group throughout the year and visit other schools and other cities and representing their, his peers. So it's very productive this year. Mr. Steele, we only have one student from Metro, and we host this every year. So next year, I'm hoping that we can have at least a nice representation from Metro Nashville Public Schools. So we'll work on that. Any, any other reports from anyone? Anything you attended? Okay, if not, then we'll go into announcements, starting with Ms. Simmons.
I have none.
Mr. Kendall?
Oh, bye.
North? Hayes?
Youth Safety Summit is going to come up, is coming up this March 24th. It will be a pearl cone magnet, and I'm hoping that we get a lot of attendance. It is centering around middle school transition, so it'd be fantastic if we could get as many middle school parents out to talk, to, to listen to the presentations and to have their children as well come out. We'll have a lot of panels there that will be, it will be beneficial to parents and students, so I hope you'll come out. Be, again, March 24th, Pearl Cone Mag, I'm going to try this again, Pearl Cone Entertainment Magnet School. It'll, starting at 9:00 AM, so I hope everyone will come out.
I have a couple of announcements. McGavick Cluster Coalition will meet this coming Thursday at 3:00 PM in the Academy Showcase Room at McGavick High School. We have been making straight, great strides in the goals that we set for ourselves, so we have some real exciting news to share with everyone. And then Monday night, the following Monday, the McGavick Parents Advisory Council will be meeting at McGavick High School, and Dr. Paul Shangis will be there to talk to us about de-cap testing.
Yes, I have a reminder to our guidance counselors for seniors that the ExxonMobil Bernard Harris Math and Science Scholarship Deadline is April 2nd. This is a scholarship for a male and female Hispanic student and a male and female African-American student in math and science, and this is sponsored through the Council of Great City Schools. Do you have anything, Dr. Register?
Michael does.
Okay.
I probably should re-announce, I think we've announced this a few weeks ago, but a week from today, March 20th at 5:00, we'll have a public hearing on the 2012, 2013 special meetings here.
Okay, all right. And, and yeah, that would be in the boardroom. After the public hearing, we will have a budget and finance meeting on that day as well. And then our next work session is Tuesday, March 27th at 5:00 PM, and the next board meeting is Tuesday, April 10th at 5:00 PM. The April 24th work session will begin at 6:00 PM instead of 5:00, and we will send you all of this information, okay?
27.
The one in April...
No, you said March 27th.
March 27th.
27.
I'm sorry.
We're with you. We're there.
I'm sorry. March 27th. But we, as I followed up, I said, we will send it to you. There's so many numbers coming together. And I want to thank the board members again for Friday night and Saturday's retreat. I know we were pretty exhausted with the rush, rush and fun-filled weekend, but thank you so very much, and hopefully this weekend will be a pretty one. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, either no further business, or maybe we join?
Thank you. Don't forget...